Day two of Herringstream six on the Napier City proposed district plan is resuming for the last day of these particular rezoning requests. We have a day fairly full of submitters today, so I won't hold things up any further. But our first submitter for the day is Mana Ahariri, who really trusts our land holdings. So we have online Mr. Gardiner Hopkins.
Moreno Koto.
We can hear you. It's a little bit muffled, but it's all right. At least we can see you.
I'll speak up as best I can.
Okay. I do note there's sort of been a lot of agreement since the section 42a, or because of the section 42a report came out in terms of agreeing, sort of this a bit more merging of what changes may need to be provided. And we did ask a few questions yesterday around the application of the precinct on the Hospital Hill sites. And Ms. Morgans agreed to sort of go away and think about it a little bit more, and around density standards as well. So bearing that in mind, we are over in your hands now.
Thank you. And look, as I think the panel knows, I've been a little bit worse for wear over the last, well, couple of weeks. I've done my best to keep up with things as they've proceeded. And I have had the opportunity to view the relevant sessions from the last couple of days. So hopefully, I'm reasonably up to play. I've had a quick chance to talk to the team. I do agree, we've made some, you know, generally very positive progress with the council's reporting team. As I understand it, there is a suggestion that there may be some joint witness conferencing between the council planning reporter and Mr. Holder, which is certainly supported by Mana Ahariri. And really, there were just a few things, largely by way of housekeeping, that I was keen to address the panel on, and then just turn to the witnesses. I think we do have a few here in person today.
Oh, yes.
But I guess just touching on the Mana Ahariri position, and what it originally asked for, and what I summarised in my representations. And I think there was some reference to the diagrams and the description of the relief sought, I think, on pages four-ish of my written representations. Essentially, and just for clarity, that was what was originally sought by Mana Ahariri.
Mm-hmm.
Original written submissions. And at least until recently, that was really the outcome that it was seeking to pursue through its expert evidence. And it did see, if you like, some simplicity in, you know, a change in zoning, rather than a range of other interventions through a precinct, through perhaps some modification of a density rule, through sort of bespoke matters for discretion if a height limit is to be exceeded. So that at least was the original focus. And speaking for Mana Ahariri as the client, they're quite prepared to be pragmatic, and to look at what is overall, you know, if you like, the most appropriate planning solution to address their original concerns, which in a nutshell was to achieve some greater flexibility for additional density, and in some cases, additional height as part of density across the Hospital Hill sites in particular, but also the Auckland Road site. So in terms of ultimate outcome, there's always generally more than one or two ways of, you know, achieving a particular endpoint. And there is a high level of comfort with the travel of direction in terms of the reporting officer and the precinct approach. And I do think, given where we are now, that's probably where the efforts are best focused, in a joint witness statement, or any further conferencing or tidy-ups, to see if a coherent package can be agreed in that sort of context. So that's, if you like, I guess, the Mana Ahariri position on the big picture and the end point. And what I'm keen to make sure, though, is that the panel, and to the extent necessary, the planners, do have confidence from any of the specialists that the increased density, whatever mechanism is adopted to achieve, that is appropriate in terms of servicing, traffic, and that urban design or wider amenity. And so that's why, and as I say, quite small on my screen, but I do think we have Johan on servicing, either in the room or available, George on traffic, and Garth Faulkner on amenity. And Garth recently revisited the sites, and, you know, I think may have some useful observations to make about the capacity for increased density. So really, in my mind, and conscious of time, unless there were sort of specific questions of the Mana Ahariri position, or what I had addressed in my representations, I was quite keen to invite the specialists to speak briefly, and answer any questions, and then perhaps move to a discussion, or for you to hear from Matthew, and how things might just proceed with any further conferencing or a joint witness statement, to try and just tie any loose ends together.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gardiner Hopkins. From my perspective, I think the details of how to provide for the development of these sites is sort of best dealt with through a joint witness statement, because I think there are matters of agreement, which will flush out any matters of disagreement. For me, it's that relationship of any development on the site with Mataroha Amenity Precinct, and the relationship with the neighbourhood that the sites are in. Because it seems to be clear for me that if you look at the sort of amenity statement for the precinct, there is sort of some discordant sort of characteristics there that would not sit well with the type of development that may be proposed for this site. I'm speculating. So that's, for me, one of the key issues facing the panel at the moment. Now, I don't know if there's any questions from the panel at the moment?
Yeah. Mr. Gardiner Hopkins, Rob van Voorthuisen here. Without wanting to belittle what the work that's been done by the officers and your experts at this stage, I think it's fair that I let you know, I'm not convinced that the original relief that was sought by Mana Ahariri in terms of medium-density residential zoning for both the Auckland Road and the Hospital Hill sites is not inappropriate. So I'm willing, I'm interested in exploring that with your witnesses today. My approach is always simple is better. And if we can achieve Mana Ahariri's outcomes with a simple rezoning, that would be my preference, as opposed to some complicated precinct approach. And when I make that comment, I observe that at the interface between medium-density residential zoning and general residential zoning, those interface issues are dealt with, because the GRZ standards apply at the interface even within the medium-density residential zoning, which to me is quite a significant attribute of what's proposed here. So I think I just wanted to let everyone know that I'm not convinced, at this stage, that alternative relief is appropriate, as opposed to the original relief that was sought.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. And if we clear away, sort of, if you like, the potential capacity issues with servicing and traffic, then I do think it does become very much an interface issue and an urban design issue. And so, look, I certainly would encourage any questions of Mr. Faulkner in that regard to be put to him. Because certainly, as I understand it, he had a level of comfort with the original relief sought, and was able to support that. And, and look, I, it's, it's one of those things. Often, the simplest solution is the best. But you'll appreciate, submitters sometimes will seek the path of least resistance as well. And so if they see an opportunity, they're inclined to latch on to it. So, so look, very happy to explore that. And in terms of the, if there is to be joint witness conferencing, if there is effectively part of that, or a direction as part of that, to explore both the alternative, but also, I guess, in terms of a section 32aa-type approach, have some comparison with the original relief sought, so that you have an informed basis on which to make your decision, or perhaps that may impact on where the planners ultimately end up.
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea. I mean, as I said at the start of my comments, I didn't want to belittle the effort that had been put in today, in terms of the precinct proposal. But certainly, anything that came forward as by way of joint witness statement, I'd be very keen to see both the original relief and any alternative relief by way of precincts and complicated provisions compared side by side, in terms of section 32, efficiency and effectiveness, and cost.
Yes. I'm sure the planners are listening carefully.
Sure they are. Thank you. Any questions? No more questions. Thank you, Mr. Gardiner Hopkins.
Thank you. Well, does that then just lead us to perhaps trying to, if it might be relatively quick, deal with the, what I call the sort of specialist, technical experts, who are there at least. And I, as I say, my screen's very small. But, yeah, I guess if Johan is there, if there's any questions for him, or anything that he just wishes to confirm about the serviceability of the sites.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, yes, he is here.
Good morning.
Good morning. And we have read your pre-circulated statements of evidence. Thank you. They're quite short and quite clear. Is there any additional points you wish to make at this point in time?
No, no, there aren't. I read the evidence again this morning, and I think, well, I have all the points I wanted to.
I suppose one question I have is, does the level of density affect your conclusions and recommendations? I mean, I'm not so much thinking of stormwater management, water supply and the like. If you could just sort of clarify that the level of density and the relationship to services?
The level of density, just starting with stormwater, doesn't affect the discharge, provided that one attenuates stormwater runoff on-site. So that can be managed on-site. Water and wastewater, so on water supply, the level of demand in terms of peak flow rate isn't very sensitive to the density level in the context of the capacity of the water supply system. The water supply system's capacity is driven by firefighting requirements. So the domestic demand, or the change in domestic demand when one changes density isn't that much. And for the Auckland Road site, there is a really good bulk supply there. For the Hospital Hill sites, the pressure is poor. One's going to have to receive water into an on-site tank, and then boost from there. So those tanks will act as a buffer against peak demand. Again, no problems there. And then on wastewater capacity, the capacity of the mains that one can discharge into will be sufficient, because wastewater systems are designed with minimum pipe sizes to prevent blockages. The minimum size is a 150 diameter pipe. On the hospital site, one discharge is down Goldsmith Road, which is at a steep gradient, lots of capacity. And then the Lever Street pump station at the receiving end of that main is a large pipeline, oh, sorry, a large pump station. So the impact of a few additional units on that pump station will be less than minor. And on the, for the Auckland Road side, that side drains to the Green Meadows pump station, which is one of the largest pump stations in the city. Again, no impact there.
No. Okay, thank you for that. Any questions from the panel?
Yeah, I've got questions. I'd like to deal with each of your briefs of evidence in sequence, starting with Auckland Road.
Yep.
You had three briefs of evidence. I want you to go through each one, one by one. So first of all, Auckland Road, paragraph three, oh, paragraph five, sorry, top page three. So you say there that the land will need to be raised by up to 600 mils along the boundary to enable gravity drainage to Auckland Road. Is that going to displace stormwater runoff onto neighbouring sites, raising the ground in that way?
No, no, it won't. The neighbouring sites don't rain to this site.
Okay. And at your paragraph 14, I couldn't quite follow what you were saying there. Can you just explain the eight dwellings, and the 38 dwellings, and the 30 dwellings? You've got like, a number of different numbers in there. So what are we looking at? Are we looking at, what are we looking at for GRZ, and what are we looking at for MRZ?
What that is trying to say is that if that lot was developed at a normal urban density of 12 lots per hectare, which is what the water supply system, the bulk system design works with 12 lots per hectare. So if we develop that site so that there are 38 lots on the site instead of eight, then the peak demand, peak domestic demand increases from 1.6 litres per second to 4.6 litres per second. So that's an additional three litres per second peak demand. And then that goes on to say that we've got a DN150 main in Auckland Road, which is supplied from both ends, from connections in Farirangi Road. And the impact of additional three litres per second peak demand on that main is minimal.
Okay, so eight dwellings at GRZ, 38 at MRZ, net increase of 30, which is an increase of three litres per second at peak, but the system can cut.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the next one I'd like to look at is the maternity ward evidence. Yeah, let me just find it. So for the maternity ward, my understanding is that at least initially, high-density residential zoning has been sought. But my question is, what difference would it make if that site was not HRZ, but was MRZ? What difference would that make, in your mind? Would it make any difference?
No, the issues are the same.
Same, okay.
Yep. And the system's capacity to deal with it is not really affected by that. The big one on that side is stormwater, to make sure that one manages stormwater properly.
Yeah. All right, that was easy. And now the evidence for the nurses' home. Just a very minor point, just so the record's correct. In your paragraph three, did you mean 79 Napier terras instead of 29? Just the nurses' home is at 79 Napier terras. Just a minor point.
point I'm trying to... Yeah, so at paragraph five, it's 79.
Sorry?
Sorry, at paragraph five, 79 terras with all the lot numbers. So yes, that's just a typo.
Yeah, no, I was just addressing paragraph three, where you said 29 Napier. So we should just change that to 79?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to establish.
I was just looking at paragraph five, where I described the site in detail, and that is...
Yeah, no, paragraph five's correct.
Yes, you're right.
Thanks. Just a minor point, just want the record correct. I've got a question about the Lever Street pump station, which I think you said has a capacity of 40 litres per second. Do we know what its current peak loading is? I mean, how close is it to capacity at the moment?
Under peak wet weather conditions, it's overloaded.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Under peak wet weather conditions, most of the sewer pump stations in Napier are overloaded.
Okay.
But the issue is that there is a serious infiltration issue with Napier's wastewater system, which is not unique to Napier. It's a worldwide problem.
Yep.
The thing with Napier is that we are really flat, and during rainy veins, groundwater rises to above the sewer mains.
Yep.
Sewer mains are old, they're leaky. So under peak wet weather conditions, the system is in trouble anyway.
Right.
During average dry weather flow conditions and peak dry weather flow conditions, there is lots of capacity. So it is, it is a big issue for most wastewater systems. But Napier is particularly badly affected because of the hypography.
Yeah, and I'm aware of inflow and infiltration issues around the country, and Napier Hills particularly bad in that regard, given the age of some of the infrastructures, I understand it. So in terms of in peak weather, peak wet weather flow, if the Hospital Hill sites were developed at a higher density, as been sought by Mana Ahariri, would that create a significant issue for that pump station?
No, no, it won't. Because under peak wet weather flow conditions, it'll be the same, regardless of what happens on that site. And under peak dry weather flow and average dry weather flow conditions, there is lots of capacity. The, when one installs new pipelines, it's used, we use plastics, PVCs and polyethylene. Those systems do not leak nearly as much as the old earthenway pipes.
All right. So in terms of where the wastewater flows, you're comfortable that the pump station and the system won't be, it won't cause it to reach some kind of tipping point where there's some significant difference to what's happening now, is it?
Yes, that's right. I'm comfortable that this pump station can cope easily with this.
All right. Thank you very much. So that's all, just a couple of points I wanted to clarify with you. That was all, Robert. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the panel? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Ivers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And look, now it makes sense to move to our traffic expert, if he is there, and just cover off any capacity-type issues.
I'm here.
Moving to urban design and then planning.
You're welcome. Again, we have read your pre-circulated statements, so thank you very much for that. Are there any main points you'd like to raise in respect of your evidence today?
No, no specific points.
Okay. All right. I'll hand over. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Ivers, thanks for your evidence. Very clear. Just one question regarding the Hospital Hill sites. You talk about vehicle per day estimates for Battery Road, and potential for speed calming measures. Battery Road already has several quite monty speed bumps on it, where the road's coming down from the hill, or each Battery Road, which is very unpopular with the people who use Battery Road, by the way. But did that have any impact on your vehicle per day estimates, in terms of what vehicles might travel down Battery Road?
No, I don't think so. So after writing this evidence, I thought I would check the capacity in another way. So I've also checked it against NZS 4404, which provides some road widths in line with, and gives capacity based on width.
Yeah.
And so I've checked it against that standard as well. And you've got a number of roads with extra width. So 4404, for example, says... So four four oh four, for example, says if you've got two four metre wide lanes, then you could have capacity of up to eight thousand vehicles a day. Just as sort of a reverse check against some of the lanewards that are available on the hill. Spencer Road also is very wide, so I know you haven't asked me about Spencer Road, but when I was reviewing it, it seems to be about two lanes of four metres as well. So the One Network classification and NZS four four oh four suggests that there's lots of capacity.
All right. No, that was all just a minor point, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No.
I don't have any further questions, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, and then in which case, I think we can move to Garth Faulkner.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome, Mr. Faulkner.
All right.
You've, you've heard our earlier discussion with Mr. Gardner Hopkins and around some of our sort of current sort of thinking and concerns, really. So you're welcome to expand on any points that have occurred to you in listening to that, so over to you.
Yeah, I guess I was generally comfortable with the original submission, seeking the general rezoning. I think just going around the sites yesterday, we just reiterated in my own mind that as we're moving towards a more compact city, the efficiency of the existing land holdings is coming under increased scrutiny. And these large land holdings that we're dealing with at the moment, the onus is really on us to make the most of that resource in terms of urban form, density, massing, et cetera. So yeah, so I'm generally comfortable with all the points I made and the position I originally stated in my evidence. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, I'll just kick off. You've heard my point I made earlier this morning around the relationship of these sites with the Mataruaho precinct, amenity precinct? Do you have any sort of views around the sort of the fit or otherwise of development of these sites with the sort of the, what are they called? Amenity values? No, amenity outcomes? I'm just, sorry, I just can't remember what the phrase is here. Amenity statement, that's it, and the main characteristics of them. You may not have them in front of you, but I'm just wondering how, how development of these sites relates to the, in particular, the immediate inhabitants of these sites.
Yes, well, in my evidence, I do go back and investigate the previous planning studies and the character study that was produced in 2019 in particular, which I believe really didn't examine the, the, the sites in question thoroughly at all, they really focused on the standalone residential sites. So generally, I feel that the provisions have led to a blanket characters sort of zoning over the, over the hill and haven't really dealt with the larger sites that we're looking at at the moment.
Okay. Do you think, how best to address, I know you're not a planner, but how best to address that in terms of the district plan, in terms of the amenity precinct? And I'm thinking either, either adapt the amenity statement for the precinct to sort of acknowledge high-density forms of development on the hill, or not apply it at all. There are two sort of options that are before us at the moment, I think.
Yeah, I think the original study started off acknowledging there was diversity on the hill, you know? Part of the hill was called Hospital Hill, acknowledging the larger institutional buildings that were there. So I mean, what we've sought is deletion of those amenity provisions on those, on those sites, so it's like kind of spot zoning for those larger sites that we're dealing with. I would, I would think that's probably the best way, or either that or go back and revisit the, the whole amenity study.
If the precinct were to be, have a hole in them to exclude these sites, how best to address the urban design issues of denser development on these sites in relationship to the neighbourhood?
I think I was quite comfortable with the provisions with medium density and high density to be applied on those, on those particular sites.
Okay.
I mean, in terms of, you know, character there, this, no, it's, it's interesting. I mean, you've got the botanical gardens on one side, the, the existing surrounding residential has been, has been there for a long time. I didn't note any recent developments, so it's been used to, to the, to the existing character of the nurses' home and the hospital, which were large institutional buildings. That was part of the character of that, of that area.
Okay, thank you. Any, any panel questions?
You've probably addressed it already, but I'll ask the question anyway. Just in terms of the former nurses' home site, which where the original submission is seeking a mix of high-density residential and medium-density residential. I was just going to ask you, in terms of the Napier Hill character issues, from an urban design perspective, would a better outcome in terms of character issues be what was submitted for, namely a mix of HRZ and MRZ? Or would it be better if the whole former nurses' home was MRZ in terms of dealing with the Napier Hill character issues? Which would be the better urban design outcome?
You're suggesting the old nurses' home, that that particular site is medium density.
Yeah, so my question is, which would be the better urban design outcome in terms of the character issues associated with Napier Hill, Hospital Hill? Would the better outcome be the relief as sought in the submission, a mix of MRZ and HRZ? Or would the better outcome be to have the whole former nurses' home site just MRZ?
So I think it's the former. I, I think the former, you know, which is the original submission, gives us greater flexibility for innovation and a range of outcomes. That makes the most of the resource, and that fits with the, the pre-existing character on that site, which was that five-level
Yeah.
concrete monolith.
Yeah.
Now it's a nurse's home.
You're right. So in terms then, in your view, without putting words in your mouth, from an urban design perspective, the suitability of HRZ is largely based on the historical character of that site when it was the five-storey nurses' home, is that what you're saying?
That would be one of the primary factors, I think, yeah.
Right.
The Craig's precinct, but I think as I noted in my, in my evidence, the site itself on the, on the ridge there, that north-facing ridge, has been modified, has got good access to it
Yeah.
and, and good outlook. The surrounding residences are orientated away from that site, so the capability of that site, irrespective of the nurses' home being pre-existing there, is actually, is quite high for higher residential density.
So in sort of, in layperson's terms, is that because the adjoining residential area has been developed in recognition of the former nurses' home, so it's kind of already able to cope with further high-rise development there, is it?
I think so, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, any questions? No. I was going to ask you a question, but I think it's self answering really, is, does it deserve a separate precinct because of its history and its location and characteristics? But I'll put, I'll put the question to you. Do you think, think there are another way of addressing its relationship, the development of these sites and its relationship to the neighbourhood is through a different precinct? Or are you almost stepping into planning territory, Mr. Holder?
Yeah, that's getting into the planning area.
Yeah.
My colleagues would probably be better at answering that, but to me, in terms of other existing examples around the country, I think it's just, it's best to keep it simple and just as spot zoning. I think we're seeing more and more spot zoning as our, as our urban centres intensify. So I think that's, that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Faulkner. Any more questions on the panel? Thank you very much.
Cheers.
Okay, and look, just conscious of time, but we've got planning left. We have had some discussion about further conferencing, but I suppose if, if there are still a few minutes, that Mr. Holder can answer some questions or get some further direction for his, his conferencing, that would, would, would be useful. I am just conscious of time for the panel and the rest of the submitters.
All right, well, we've actually got a little bit more time towards the middle of the day at the moment, but I think this is, this is quite important, these sites and the planning for them are sort of more important to, to get into the issues here rather than sticking to timelines and things. Mr. Holder, the sort of ground is moving underneath your feet in terms of some of the position that your original evidence gave. Did you want to just respond to your sort of current thinking and views and recommendations?
Thanks, sir, yes, has been some shifting sands a bit as we've moved on. I guess my position started when I picked this up, was I looked at the original submission and, and I considered a section forty-two report that was quite resolute in its position, so fairly entrenched, and this is general residential as opposed to consideration of anything greater than that. So I guess I looked at it more pragmatically and thought, well, if there could be some acknowledgement of the, what I saw as the unique characteristics of the site in this area, I mean, historically, the urban fabric's been able to accommodate high-density type development, it's always been large buildings, not only on the hospital site, but some of the wider sites in Napier Hills and the old Hokarei. So I, I guess, in my discussions and I, and I, I guess I'm grateful for the approach that Ms. Morgan made, and those discussions said, well, look, how can we get to perhaps a, a alternative position? We looked at, well, the height was a, is always a considerable factor in how you define that character, in my opinion. So you could always work around some of the landscaping and how things might fit on a site, but the height was always, is always perhaps a sticking point or a starting point for, for how you might consider effects beyond what would normally be expected. And I thought eight metres is a starting point's pretty, pretty low bar, considering, you know, there'd been five stories or close to twenty metres on, on those sites. So that was just in relation to the, I guess, the hospital sites, Auckland Road, I guess I can look at that again separately, but I, I'm always mindful of spot zoning, you know, the practice of moving away from, from that. But look, I'm happy to, to work further with, with the planning staff on, on a way forward. My consideration, or the things that have always been of concern in the back of my mind also is, we've got to worry about density as well and how, how those provisions, as you say, that the amenity zone looked at one to five hundred, one house per site, or one dwelling per site. So just how, how that might work as well going forward as a consideration, but ultimately how activity status is applied, because my, my views were moving towards restricted discretionary when it got beyond that twelve, because it was an easier point to start measuring, because at this stage, we don't have any, any form of development to properly consider for the sites. But simply jumping to, let's say discretionary, just creates a bit of a problem because we're not sure what we're measuring against. So those provisions are always something that we'd need to consider as well.
Okay, I think as we alluded to earlier, I think we are looking at a joint witness statement, turn yourself and Ms. Morgan, and looking at the options as Commissioner Van der Voorthausen said, you know, on the basis of, our preference is to keep it simple if possible, but to sort of look at the main options there are for those, for the planning of these sites and the pros and cons, section thirty-two kind of issues for those, and come, see if there's a level of agreement about the most appropriate, you know, form of planning controls for the sites.
Yes, yes, I, look, my, my opinion's always been that the sites could accommodate a, a more intensive form of development than what would normally be expected in a, in a residential zone, so the final fit of that, look, I'm prepared to work with, with the staff as to how that might be, but, but we've also got to be mindful of the other experts and how they see it as well. But, but obviously today, they're saying they don't have a particular issue with, with high density.
No. And I'm, and I'm just, my observation is that the, just because historically the neighbourhood has had our grey monolith, this Mr. Faulkner calls it, doesn't necessarily mean that's the right appropriate outcome either for this, for the long-term character of the area either.
No, the nurses' home is removed, but we do have a, an existing use certificate application sitting in at council, and there was just some difficulty on how that was being applied around activity versus bulk and location, for example, so that's on hold, but your point's taken, you know?
Okay. Any questions from the panel?
Yeah, just dealing with the Auckland Road site first, and again, just turning to the alternative solution that's been promoted mainly in response to the officers' report. In my mind, it's a little bit messy because it requires changes to GRZ objective four and GRZ policy one, whereas just applying a spot zoning of medium density is, in my mind, is cleaner. And when I looked at the relevant standards, it's not a heck of a lot of difference when you look, when it boils down to it. So in terms of yards, front yards, GRZ three metres, MRZ one point five, side yards, both one metre, not substantial difference. Height in relation to boundary, forty-five degree angle plane, starts at three metres high at GRZ, four metres high at MRZ, again, not, not significant difference. Coverage, both fifty percent. Landscaping, forty percent for GRZ, twenty percent for MRZ. Bit of difference there, but not necessarily significant. So the main issue being height, eight metres for GRZ and MRZ, twelve metres. So really just, just reinforcing, at this stage, in terms of simple is best, I'm not seeing a lot of advantage to a more complicated solution as opposed to a spot zoning for Auckland Road, but look forward to the joint witness statement on that. And same issues with Napier Hill sites. I just noticed, Mr. Holder, at your paragraph thirty-two, you've, I think you've used the wrong GRZ standards, but that's all right, you can look at that when you do the joint witness statement, so the same sort of comparison would apply. Just that one point that you can take on board when you're doing the further work, or two points really, when you're doing the further work with the officers. In paragraph fifteen, you talk about some wording changes, and you discuss the words retention versus maintenance versus management. Now, in my mind, retain and maintain pretty much mean the same thing. I don't really differentiate between the meaning of those words when I've got a decision-maker's head on, looking at a consent. And in my view, the word management is meaningless. I mean, everything we do is managing, so managing or management provides no direction whatsoever to a decision-maker, so I don't really, I really don't like that word in policies and objectives. And so to my mind, the cleaner option is just to probably remove precinct three from these hospital hill sites, it's cleaner and simpler, but look forward to the joint witness statement view on that. But I also urge both you and the officers to take into account Mr. Gardner Hopkins' very comprehensive legal submissions, where he talks about the treaty settlement issues and the statutory direction for us as decision-makers to give quite strong regard to those quite unique circumstances that are attached to treaty settlement land. And I think that's a very important lens that the planning assessment and the joint witness statement needs to be cast, and we're not dealing with run-of-the-mill land here, this is special land. And Mr. Gardner Hopkins has very clearly set that out with very relevant case law, which I found extremely interesting. which I found extremely interesting. And so I'd encourage both yourself and the officers to be very cognizant of that when you're doing your further work.
Yes.
This is a unique situation in my mind, and it needs to be treated accordingly for the reasons that Mr Gardiner Hopkins outlines in his representations.
Yes.
That's all from me.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Any questions? No, all good. Thank you very much, Mr Holder.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Garder Hopkins?
Yes, look, very little more from me, other than to thank the panel for its sort of direction and questions. I think the planners do need to get their thinking caps on, but this has, this has been a valuable part of the process. So appreciate the, the time and effort taken by the panel to give the feedback that it has.
Okay, thank you very much, and all the best for your recovery as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So our next emitter is Marist Holdings. We do have some additional chairs around the table on the side here, just seeing the numbers.
Is that, does that sound good? You stay well away from all of them.
Could a mouse... Oh, I've got a bird on my nose. Yes. I think they know something.
Giordano Cotto, yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman and panel and staff. So we have our team of the four of us who've prepared expert evidence for Marist Holdings.
Yep.
And we also have Mr Holly and Mr Hockard here. You've already heard from Mr Holly, who's the CEO, Mr Hockard's the Chair of the Board. So they're here just in case of any, any questions that they might be better to answer. So in terms of our evidence, we're proposing to start with, with Mr Bray, and we will then go to Matthias and Mr Gabriel and then myself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just to alert you, I mean, there seems to be a large degree of concurrence or acceptance of our various submission points at this stage from the reporting officers. So we're, I think we're focused on any outstanding matters in contention, or clearly, or in your hands about what you want to address. But I think if we can focus on more of the areas where there's not agreement, that would be helpful to the panel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, have you had a chance to read the supplementary evidence?
Yep.
So there's a brief, a couple of brief statements, one from myself and one from Mr Gabriel. But just to note in my supplementary evidence that the recommendation in the section forty-two A report is to reject the submissions, but also making the point that we understand that there is no officer support. So I guess we're in your hands with the level of detail you want us to go into. So we take the primary statement says read and, you know, happy to take questions on those. But yeah, Mr Bray will kick off.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't read the supplementary.
Yeah, the supplementary statements only came in very recently.
Yes, that's, that's, that's right. They're quite, quite brief, so.
Well, maybe, maybe just lead us through your summary statements and supplementary, we can focus on those.
Okay. We'll perhaps see if, yeah, Mr Gabriel reads his and then I'll read mine.
Okay.
Okay. I think you know who I am, but yeah, Simon Peter Gabriel, civil engineer at Strata Group Consulting Engineers, a local-owned multidisciplinary engineering consultancy based in Hastings. I outline my qualifications, experience and commitment to comply with the Environment Court Expert Witness Code of Conduct in my previous evidence statement. I summarised, I summarised the proposed servicing approach to each of the three waters as follows. In regard to the water servicing solution, it is proposed that the development will connect to the Napier City Council Water Network and Church Road potable and firefighting supply. NCC have not raised any concerns regarding water pressure or flow in this area. From a technical perspective, the water servicing is technically feasible and comparably unconstrained. In regard to the wastewater servicing, there are no NCC wastewater mains in Church Road adjacent to the development area. Due to this, the wastewater from the development will require pumping to the point of discharge on Church Road. I consider that the wastewater servicing for the development can be delivered as a resilient solution. In regard to the stormwater servicing, the proposed stormwater solution will ensure that the post-development stormwater discharge peak flow rates from the development nodes are no greater than pre-development conditions. The preliminary design included calculations to demonstrate the feasibility of incorporating attenuation as a function of the stormwater treatment swales. All development nodes can be safely protected from floodwaters and self-induced inundation. I recommend that the final stormwater design incorporates low-impact stormwater design principles wherever practical, and the environmental outcomes are considered in accordance with the civil engineering assessment, which was originally submitted. The preliminary stormwater design features an expanded wetland area adjacent to the Tyco stream. This area provides sufficient capacity to comfortably exceed that, to comfortably exceed any required offset of flood storage lost resulting from the development earthworks. Following the preliminary design, the subsequent revision of the structure plan, updates have been made to the plans concerning three waters and roading to incorporate minor changes recommended by Mr Bradshaw of NCC. After the meeting held on Friday the thirteenth of June between Mr Mackay, Ms Morgan and Mr Bradshaw, Mr Bradshaw proposed further refinements aimed at simplifying the structure plans. These refinements primarily implement the principles agreed upon during the broader meeting held on the nineteenth of May between Marist Holdings experts and council reporting officers and representatives. I see no issues with the recommended refinements and will proceed with the necessary updates in due course. From a civil engineering perspective, I believe there are feasible solutions to service the proposed development regarding stormwater wastewater and water.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for that, Mr Gabriel. Any questions for you from the panel?
No, no questions on three waters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just had a couple. So in your supporting geotechnical report, it identified surface flooding constraints. And I was just wondering if you could clarify whether additional stormwater attenuation or site-specific flood mitigation measures were being proposed and whether or not you had considered them against the natural hazards factor.
Yeah, the, the development nodes are all cited outside of those flood risk areas. We looked at some preliminary design levels for the Church Road precinct, and we suggested some earthworks would be required in that area. And also the proposed, well, the preliminary proposed stormwater swales, which also act as attenuation, would just start to edge into that flood zone. But it's the actual development, the residential area would be well removed from that. Furthermore, there, yeah, we could easily accommodate NZS four four oh four freeboard requirements from the known flood levels.
Thank you. And I just have one further one. So you've suggested that the existing three waters servicing standards are overly prescriptive. Are you able to point me to which PDP rules or something to do with, I assume, pipe sizes or connection spacing standards that you want flexibility in? And have you proposed how a case-by-case discretion could be built into policy, which I assume is what you're asking for with that statement?
Yeah, was it from the original report?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, probably in terms of the wastewater and just what's in the code of practice. And yeah, I'd just encourage some further discussion, which I think would be at resource consent stage.
Okay, so not required in policy. You think it could be dealt with through specific resource consenting conditions. Okay, thank you, that's helpful. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you very much, Mr Gabriel. Mr Mackay?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. Yeah, so this supplementary statement, simply to try and bring the panel up to speed with, with what's happened since lodging our primary evidence on the thirtieth of May. So if I can just start at paragraph three of my supplementary statement.
Yep.
I've reviewed the summary statement for hearing stream six rezoning from the section forty-two A reporting officer, Rachel Morgan, as well as the additional further opening comments by the same author. Ms Morgan's summary statement acknowledges that a meeting was scheduled with Marist Holdings on the thirteenth of June regarding refinement of the zoning and provisions to apply to Mission Estate. In her further opening comments, Ms Morgan sets out the following statement on the Marist Holding rezoning submission following the meeting on thirteenth of June. So you will take that as read since it was in Ms Morgan's report.
Mm-hmm.
The paragraph five, "I agree with the joint, I agree with the above statement and am happy to work with Ms Morgan to provide a joint witness statement. From my perspective, after several iterations of track change comments, there does not appear to be any outstanding disagreement on issues of substance, and rather the focus is now on refining the details of the district plan provisions. Nevertheless, I would like to take the opportunity to update the panel on the agreed outcomes from the meeting held on the thirteenth of June." So paragraph six, "Ms Morgan and Mr Bradshaw identified that the structure plans as requested in the Marist Holdings submissions and with refined versions appended to the statement of evidence of Mr Gabriel could, in their opinion, be further improved. I've discussed the recommended refinements to the structure plans with Mr Gabriel, who sees no problem with the suggested amendments. The refinements would largely implement the principles agreed at the wider meeting held on the nineteenth of May. The agreed amendments to the structure plans are summarised in the following bullet points. So A, combine the three waters structure plans, so that, that's the appendix reference, so H to I would, sorry, H to J would, and use structure plans proposed in the Marist Holdings submission. Combining those into one, focusing on connection points to council-reticulated infrastructure and removing some of the internal detail, this would preserve greater flexibility for future development within the Mission Church Road residential precinct in the Artisan Village areas, while the proposed district plan standards and assessment criteria would ensure appropriate servicing. B is to amend the road overview structure plan, reference appendix seven H, by adding a text box specifying the urbanisation of the Church Road street frontage with footpaths and streetlights. And so that's consistent with the outcome generally agreed at the nineteenth of May meeting, which is rather than setting development back from Church Road, it is more appropriate for the street frontage to be urbanised, which will have the likely effect of slowing traffic speeds on Church Road as well as providing appropriate amenities for a residential area. And finally, C, add to the road overview structure plan a walking path connection from the Tyco stream Esplanade Reserve to the indicative pathway shown on the proposed district plan appendix seven A, which is in the proposed plan as notified. The public path that would link the Emerald Hills Mission Residential Precinct to Church Road via Mission Estate currently branches into two alternative routes on that appendix seven A structure plan. The proposed Esplanade Reserve now provides the opportunity to firm this link-up as shown in the diagrams and figures one and two below. So figure one is an extract from the existing structure plan in the proposed district plan, and it shows how the, the dash pathway can be linked to the Esplanade Reserve on Tyco Road that would result from the proposed development of that area. And this figure two is taken from Mr Gabriel's structure plan and overlays the, the walking path linkage, including through the Esplanade Reserve. The paragraph nine, regarding refinements to the proposed district plan chapter is under discussion, being Mission Development Area, Mission Landscape and Visitor Precinct, and to the Marist Holdings-proposed Mission Church Road Residential Precinct. I'm in general agreement with the markups provided by Ms Morgan to, to the Development Area and to the Mission Church Road Residential Precinct. The precinct five, which is the Mission Landscape and Visitor Precinct, includes the more bespoke submission request to implement the proposed Artisan Village and therefore has a greater level of detail to work through. Ms Morgan has suggested the following definition of craft activities, which relates to one of the specific rules there. Paragraph eleven, in my opinion, that definition appropriately encapsulates the nature of the craft activities envisaged. I've suggested further technical amendments to PR EC five as a result of discussions with Ms Morgan, which would best be presented to the panel as part of a joint witness statement, along with the agreed versions of dev three in precinct three A. Yeah, as I mentioned at the start, I'm conscious that the recommendation for all the Marist Holdings submissions relating to the rezoning in Artisan Village in the section forty-two A report is to reject all submission points. From the two meetings that I've attended with Ms Morgan and council officers, I understand that the officer position is now to support accepting the submission points with agreed refinements to be finalised in a joint witness statement. For the reasons set out in the Marist Holdings submission documentation, including the section thirty-two report, my statement of evidence and the supplementary statement, I consider that the amendments to the proposed district plan requested by Marist Holdings can appropriately be accepted, subject to refinement of the detailed wording and structure plan appendices. I'm happy to answer any questions, both on the supplementary statement and my statement of evidence.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, thank you. Can you just clarify, I'm just looking, the, the current notified plan has six Mission plans shown in there from age of F. So what is the current proposal in terms of what plans should be incorporated into the district plan? Are you able to summarise what they are?
Sorry, yeah. So A and B are the general Mission.
Overall map.
Structure plans.
Right, an area plan map.
Yeah, actually, so we've probably got the numbering wrong. So the following ones that go through to F are all specific to the Emerald Hills area or the, the Mission Residential Precinct up on top of the hill.
Yep.
So what our submission for, for Marist Holdings has proposed to add is some specific structure plans relating to the development of these rezoning areas in the Mission Estate.
Okay. And are those maps, they'll be part of the joint witness statement proposed?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so the general premise was that the, those structure plan maps that were part of the submission probably provided too much detail. They were based on the concept plan.
Yeah, they're sort of a bit different to the current maps.
Yes.
These are...
Yeah, so, yeah, so it's, it obviously creates a bit more, more flexibility if some of that detail's removed.
Okay. So that can be done as part of the process?
Yes, I understand it would be within the scope of our submission to remove detail from those maps.
Okay, and you, your final question is about the definition of craft, craft activities. And you're comfortable with that definition?
Yes, in my statement of evidence... Yes, in my statement of evidence, I suggested it wasn't really necessary because the activity status was restricted discretionary in any case, rather than permitted. But I'm happy with the definition that Ms Morgan suggested. So since, since there's a definition on the table, that I'm happy that's appropriate to include.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the panel?
Yeah, I'd just like, first of all, I've got a question for Mr Bray, and then some questions for Mr Mackay, which he will need to go away and talk to his roading expert about. But first of all, Mr Bray, in terms of your paragraph seventy-one, have you got your evidence there?
Oh, did I actually bring it? No, haven't, sorry, but I remember. Well, if you could just remind me what seventy-one says.
So your paragraph seventy-one, I'll read it out to you. You note the inclusion of a row of trees along the length of Church Road frontage, which is intended to provide some buffering of the rural winery operations from the residential environment opposite, noting that the vineyards are in this location long before the housing, as well as contributing to the amenity of Church Road. The installation of these trees requires removal of up to four rows of grapes. So my question is, is it still the intention that there will be a row of trees along the Church Road and the removal of four rows of grapes?
It's in the master plan, so if that is the outcome that's required, then yes, that would be the case.
Okay.
It's partly there to manage reverse sensitivity that's becoming an increasing issue for the winery.
Yep. Okay. I just want to confirm that was still on the table. Okay, that was all, thank you. Now, Mr Mackay, I just wanted to take you to your paragraph eight B of your supplementary statement. And it's the same issue that you addressed at paragraph one hundred and twelve of your primary statement, which you do not need to turn to. We can address the issue by looking at your paragraph eight B. And it concerns where the suggestion that there should be direct access to Church Road from the area of development that's sort of around the Woolshed area. Now, my understanding is that Church Road is an arterial road, and in my experience, it's extremely unusual for a council and a developer to propose increasing the side friction on an arterial road for road for traffic safety issues that that would generate. Generally, you want to avoid increased side friction on arterial roads because they're subject to a high level of traffic, and the more direct accesses there are onto the road, the more the increase in traffic safety risk. So to me, this is quite a perverse and unusual outcome that's being suggested. So I'm not persuaded that it's at all entirely appropriate. And what I'd request as part of the joint witness statement going forward is some further consultation between the applicant's traffic expert and whoever the traffic expert is in the council who's suggesting this approach, to look at the alternatives of no increased side friction on Church Road, i.e. no direct access to Church Road from that residential development, compared to the option of having that direct access to Church Road. And I would also like Mr Bray and whoever the council's landscape expert is to contribute to that discussion, because on the other side of Church Road, we have quite a different roadside environment. There's a wide berm, it's tree-laned, and so from an urban design landscape perspective, I'd like the options assessed. Is replication of that on the other side of the road a better outcome as opposed to having a more urban residential type street frontage with access directly onto the road, which is the better landscape urban design outcome? And so, Mr Bray, I don't want you to answer that now, because I'd like you to go away and think about that. But I'd like that issue addressed further by both the traffic experts and the landscape experts. Because I'm, yeah, it's fair to say, I just wanted to put both parties on notice that I'm not persuaded that's the best outcome at this stage.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So our starting point in this submission was, I guess, your first proposition of avoiding side friction and limiting the access. So the meeting we had on the 19th of May, Mr Cusson, the council's traffic engineer, suggested the other proposition that there would be advantages, because there's a problem with the actual speed of the traffic travelling on Church Road, that the side friction could be beneficial in this instance, but also in terms of a urban design perspective from the residential urbanisation of the street frontage. So I guess both options are available, because the first one's in the original submission, and, you know, the second one's been dealt with, and evidence as to how that would be achieved. So certainly happy to work through that further. We have Mr Barito here, our traffic engineer, who may be able to comment on it now. So he was party to the discussions with Mr Cusson.
Yeah. Oh, good, I didn't know that was Mr Barito, I didn't think he was here, so. Mr Barito, what's your view on introducing side friction to an arterial road, and your experience, is that beneficial or not beneficial?
Well, side friction in the form of additional vehicle crossings, I think this just adds the number of conflict points, so increases the number of conflict points. So that's not beneficial for an arterial road. There are other forms of side friction that we can use, for instance, tree planting light poles that give motorists an impression of, a visual perception of narrowing. So they naturally reduce their speeds down based on that visual perception. And there are other forms of speed management as well that can be applied, that can be more effective than additional vehicle crossings.
Right. All right, so very good. So I look forward to your views being expressed in a joint witness statement on this issue, Mr Barito. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was all.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I was just trying to get some clarity earlier on, I think in regards to staging and delivery of infrastructure. You had sort of made the request for some staging rules or conditions in the plan, and so I was just wondering, I see your summary refers to agreement on the structure plan, the servicing and the traffic input, but could you clarify whether there's any further thinking of staging rules?
Either, thank you, Commissioner. Not within the, not within the submission itself, I consider that staging would be able to be appropriately addressed through a resource consent application for subdivision. The two areas are both relatively discreet in size, but the Church Road residential area probably would lend itself to some staging, given these are two separate areas, the sort of hill area by Mary Doyle and the lower flats area, but that would be able to be dealt with through a resource consent application.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you. More questions?
No, let's go on.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr Mackay and colleagues, for that. We have no more questions, and as Commissioner Van Voorthausen said, we look forward to a joint witness statement that does that, and including sort of the actual proposed maps and things to go with it, would be very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, panel, thank you.
Morning tea time. Yeah, we'll adjourn the hearing for morning tea, and we are due to resume at eleven ten, still, if not earlier. Okay, and that's with Burkitt Commercial? Okay, thank you very much.
What time are they coming up?
And thank you very much for your flexibility. Hearing stream six is reconvened after morning break. And we have before us Mr. Kay, Mr. Burkitt, do we? Yes. Mr. Kay, we've seen your pre-circulate evidence. I thank you very much for that. Other than that, we'll hand over the floor to you to talk to the submission.
Wonderful. Can you guys hear me? This is...
We can.
Can you hear us? That's the main thing.
I can hear you.
Good.
I'm happy. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Good morning and thanks for having us here this morning. I'm Jason Kay. I'm a planner with Development Now Limited. I prepared the submission and evidence and with sincere apologies, I also prepared and provided the additional information last night. the additional information last night. And I'm saying night because it was night time. Apologies on the timing of that. It was churning through things and getting it out. With me, I have Mr. Brendan Burkitt of Burkitt Commercials Limited. Mr. Burkitt is an earthworks and civil construction contractor in his day life and he's come dressed as that today. We're going to try to be brief to avoid talking beyond the 15 minutes, which I probably would if I was not mindful of this. So getting into it, the relief sought and rationale is for this is set out in the submission and evidence. The, in general, we have concern that council's industrial land supply strategy was too reliant on the deferred airport industrial zone land, with much of that required for the airport plans, expansion plans, their runway extension and parallel taxiway. And we're now concerned that it's too reliant on delivery of the industrial land within the Ahurri Station property, which I don't think there's any doubt will be challenging to deliver. We're not suggesting it won't happen, it's just a matter of timing on that, given the challenges and costs of bringing that land forward. There seems to be acknowledgement of the tight industrial land supply in Napier from council, including reference in the 42A comments relating to the loss of Sebun Street industrial land as part of, oh, it's hearing stream six, it was this one. Sorry, there's so many hearing streams and I don't know how everyone's keeping track. You're thinking about a 42A report and then is it this stream or is it that stream and then what topic? The suitability of the land for industrial use is based on the adjacency to the existing Awatoto industrial area and the proximity to council's wastewater treatment plant. The 42A report has highlighted the absence of a structure plan and the exposure of the land to natural hazards, particularly the river source flooding and exceptional events that was seen through there in Cyclone Gabriel. We believe there's a solution for the flood exposure that's being developed by Napier City Council, Huxbury Regional Council and an industrial users group. Unfortunately, as I've set out in my evidence and then in the supplementary note last night, we've faced difficulty in getting details of the status and progression of that flood protection scheme. From a non-engineering perspective, expansion of the protection scheme to include much more land for a small additional length of stop bank makes a lot of sense. It's an additional length of east-west stop bank, but the north-south lengths remain the same to take in a lot, much wider area, which would include the land that we're looking at with the submission. That is a scenario that has been assessed by the group, by the industrial and by the working group. It wasn't their preferred option at the time of the future development strategy reporting. However, that alignment, that was a preferred option, has substantial conflict with the Awatoto Golf Course fairway, fairway? You know, look, someone who does golf, do we call it a fairway? Yeah. Yep, thank you. Sorry, I'm not a golfer. I've been calling it fairway and I've been thinking, I should check that it is the correct term. So again, we're slightly blind with council not sharing details on the flood protection bund scheme. We've sought them, we can't get them, we don't know what the status of the information is. There's been a public workshop, we've had attendance at that, we haven't got answers beyond that. It's fairly critical to the approach to this land. But that said, if we couldn't, if we were, if the land was excluded from the secondary flood protection scheme, the alternative option is to fill the land, which seems to be par for the course for Napier Development Now, which Mr. Burkitt can probably talk to, given that he's out there with trucks and bulldozers filling land for various development sites, including parklands. So yeah, we remain hopeful of inclusion, but we have, that is the fallback for land filling. The structure plan that we've produced is a very high level and would accommodate either the flood protection bund running down McLeod Road and the very wide road reserve there or land filling. The structure plan is perhaps a little bit more detailed than the Forarangi structure plan within the proposed district plan, but it's still rather light on detail because it's five flat, regular shaped parcels of land that are intended for industrial development of who knows what form. So someone could come along for 10 hectares or someone could have come along for two hectares. We started this process with Mr. Burkitt because, well, his yard is on, is on his land on the corner, his contractor's yard, and we know what the market is like for contractors' yards. We, well, particularly post, immediately post Cyclone Gabriel, we were, I'm not going to use the term inundated, we were receiving a lot of calls from contractors chasing, can we move here? Can we move here? They're almost always no's because it was rural zone and it was highly productive land. Contractors end up in the rural zone in unregulated, unlawful circumstances because they don't have access to suitable industrial zone land or they feel that they can't afford to pay 1.5 million for a half hectare yard that they need in terms of size for maneuvering their big gear. So, yeah, we were sympathetic to the contractor cause and that was what guided us to start with, thinking, well, this land, it suited Brendan, Mr. Burkitt, Burkitt Earthworks well. And, and, you know, that was unserviced and we didn't need the servicing for that style of industrial, which is why we pursued this land. That said, there are others out there, we know of, you know, various other operators that have been assessing opportunities or land availability. So the format of the structure plan is there just to say, here we provide access to the rear lots from Awatoto Road. We know that there'd be a little bit of road widening to ensure, you know, that two lanes with underpass opportunity for vehicles turning in. And someone who wanted 10 hectares could come along or Brendan could, Mr. Burkitt, sorry, I'm so used to calling him Brendan. Mr. Burkitt could snip up his land, four hectares of his land into a series of, for example, contractor yards, again, with a specific access off Awatoto Road. So that's coming back to the structure plan. The structure plan is very high level because that's the intent of the development of the zoning. And it's, yeah, it's not a difficult piece of land and I say that and I wait for Ms. Morgan to give me a side look about flooding. It's not a difficult piece of land outside of flooding, that's not constrained, it's regu-, it's a regular shape, it's road frontages, it's flat land. So it's, you know, a structure plan is by default quite, quite brief. We would expect an additional layer of control would be required to accompany the structure plan and to ensure that, for example, flood resilience was provided and that to align use or development with the service level at that time. So we, while we're adjacent to the wastewater treatment station, treatment plant, there's wastewater mains in both McLeod Road and Awatoto Road that trundle back down to the wastewater treatment plant. I don't know if it's a stone's throw with my arm, but certainly if you're a cricketer, I think it'd be a stone's throw from the back fence of this land across to the wastewater treatment plant. So, you know, we've got unparalleled proximity to the wastewater treatment plant. Council have told us through the FDS and subsequent that there is no water delivery being supplied to that area. We, without trying to be sarcastic or facetious or whatever the correct term would be, I have added to the evidence report from council that shows their water extension and their strategic documents show a water loop, strategic infrastructure planning shows a water loop for the Awatoto area. So we know that that's been long-term thought, probably from many, many years back, perhaps. So water and if a user needed water, they would make that, they would extend water services themselves or they'd look to bore themselves. Stormwater, we would look to onsite infiltration basins. We've seen those at Amahu Road North industrial area and we've seen them formed and hopefully working there as an effective stormwater solution. So that's a very brief summary of where we are. I've got full confidence that you've read the evidence, the submission and my supplementary notes on that is sent through last night. Yeah, I get lost on the case because I keep looking at it and I keep seeing the merit of it and the comparative advantage of this land for industrial over other options across the, across the city. So yeah, if you've got a question about bulldozers or contractors, land demand or filling of land even, Brendan's happy to take questions or I'll wait for my questions.
Could you, would you mind us, before we turn to questions, just leading us through the documents that were circulated this morning because we haven't had much time to resume? I'm just looking at the structure plan for a start and just for your information, I don't know if it's helpful or not, but the councils are looking at replacing the Forarangi structure plan with something a little bit more detailed that has roads and links on it. So bear that in mind.
I was here for that discussion, sir. So I did hear that and yeah, I was aware.
So could you just lead us through this? Because on the key for this, it shows wastewater treatment and I can't for the life of me see where that is and it's just on the corner there.
It is on that, on that bottom right-hand corner, that shade blue there.
It's part of the council's...
Pale, yeah. Their treatment plant. So as I say, a stone's throw with a good arm. Yeah.
Right.
So, yeah, the purple being the general industrial zone colour from national planning standards, five lots there. And sorry, I should also add, appreciating that a diagram goes a long way and I've not been providing diagrams in evidence and that's why these notes came through yesterday for this and another one, because it makes a lot of difference.
Can you lead me also, what are the lines shown on McLeod Road there meant to represent for my benefit? You talked about a bund or something?
So that is just existing contour that's on the underlay of this hastily prepared plan. So that's, that's existing contour.
Okay.
So along McLeod Road, all of the, well, many of the owners have fenced out to a pretend boundary, shall we call it?
Yep.
The boundary is, the row, the, from the edge of seal to the front boundary of those McLeod properties is around about 20 metres, from memory.
Yep.
And all of the properties have neglected to abide by that 20-metre setback and have occupied road reserves such as Brendan and his neighbours. It's an issue all along there and some of them have really nice fences that look like they were quite a big effort to put in, quite high, quite sturdy, that they will at some point have to move. So that's, for us, that's where a bund would make a lot more sense going through McLeod Road, through that road reserve area, rather than as their preferred option at the time of the FDS, when we were last updated, being to the seaward side, to the east of this block of five properties. It was to trundle along to the immediate inland west boundary of the zoned industrial. That would have followed our, the boundary to this land and then shot across Awatoto Road and through Awatoto Golf Course, which we can perhaps talk about in 15 minutes' time. But I understand there is significant conflict of that, of a bund crossing the golf course in terms of their ability to use the golf course and run vehicles up and around and over that bund, their maintenance and their getting around. The alternative option, as we say, is stepping inland a little bit further, taking in this land, taking perhaps land to the south as well, running it down McLeod Road and onto Ericsson Road and tying into the western end of the east-west existing stop bank that runs between the two golf courses. Yeah, so there's land available, it makes more sense, or you would take land off the McLeod Road properties if necessary to facilitate a bund through there. Again, it's difficult for us, as it is for you, looking at it now, but we haven't had detail. So we've sought detail from council. Yeah, no more than what was provided in the FDS is the answer.
Okay. So what kind of uses are the land made of being used now?
So, yeah, I think I termed it various uses. It's all zoned rural, there are resource consents for various activities. With a nice aerial photo, you can see the one, the property on the corner of McLeod Road and Awatoto Road is used for a contractor's yard that probably spans about a hectare and a half of that property and the remainder of that was used as stock for stockpiling Cyclone Gabriel silt and is now being put back into...
Grass.
Grass, okay. I think the next property is a large house in the middle of a field and the one beyond, the one, the next one on between, which the end, the third property along the eastern end of this block has a series, I think it's motor caravans and caravans in there and they've got resource consent for some activities, non-rural, motor caravan, caravan storage and activity. It's a historic use that seems to have progressed over years to where it is now and then was resource consented. Going down McLeod Road, it's rural and then there are some further down, further south down McLeod Road, there's a composting operation which is consented, very industrial, not the one I think that we all smell on Waitsangie Road, but another one. And then there's some other varying activities down there. Yeah. The four hectare lots have come about from subdivision, I think it was late 2000s, that was, you know, for our rural zone four hectare subdivision standard, they were intended essentially as lifestyle lots, albeit that it was lifestyle lots adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant and some industrial and some interesting industrial being the odorous ones.
And can you let us know about the land ownership too? Are they all owned in different ownership?
They're in different ownership, yes. So Brendan, Mr. Burkitt owns the one on the corner and then he knows his neighbours. The one in the back corner, in the south-east corner, is in ownership, same ownership of the next property to the south. I think we would expect that there are people observing what's going on at the moment, ready to assemble land, get contracts on it, to assemble land.
And is it your evidence that the land could be rezoned ahead of any flood mitigation
Yes.
Work?
Yes. On the basis that we would have, I've put in there, in the evidence and then in a little note that I made maybe an hour ago, I would expect some provisions, some additional term that we've been using fish hook, that would prevent development or use change of, ahead of either the bund being completed or an alternative resilience format being land filling.
Okay, because I'm just looking at the figure 25 in the section 42A report which showed the various alignment options for secondary containment at Awatoto?
Yeah.
From the Awatoto Industry Group report? Is that right?
Yes.
It's on page 62, page 62.
Yep.
So is the reselling request dependent largely on that report and its implementation?
Well, no. Well, no, we believe, we would prefer that the land was within the flood protection bund. It makes a lot of sense from a planner rather than engineer. From my perspective and from everyone that I've talked to when we've initially looked at it, including engineers, inclusion of the land makes a lot of sense. It avoids conflict with the golf course and it provides for a tie-in at the inland end of that golf course stock bank. So it makes a lot of sense. The current preferred alignment is based on the group that are progressing the protection bund in association with Napier City Council and Hawke's Bay Regional Council. So that alignment protects the land that is their land, so that's been their focus. If there was more land there, there would be more land protected and more beneficiaries and also more people with a wallet paying for it, which probably makes a lot more sense for everyone also. We think it is a case of zoning and they will come, that the land will be included. However, if it wasn't, if the bund fell over and wasn't implemented, we would still see this land as being suited for development, albeit on the basis of filling. Sorry, I was just gonna say.
Have you proposed any, no, sorry.
No, I was just gonna add, filling is what we're seeing commonplace across all development now. All of the sites that are, you know, coming through. The council's Parkland site is filling to a depth of, I understand, about a metre. So, you know, it's not an uncommon process now for that hazard immunity.
Have you posed any sort of provisions that would go with this suggested rezoning? Particularly in terms of the flooding issue and any deferred kind of.
No, we were sitting hoping that we were going to get an update from council's engineers to confirm where they'd got to. We've heard various whispers, as you do, in the construction community. We were optimistic we were going to get something, we haven't. I would love the opportunity to just sit down and pin out an additional provision or set of provisions that tied to this land. Because I still see it's not just the hazard, it's also the servicing. We would want to make sure that council wasn't faced with, you know, undue servicing demand and expectation that as land became, was used or developed, that it was done in accordance with servicing ability.
And just a question, the geotechnical report that was also circulated this morning. There's one particular figure I can't quite understand. Figure 2.1 on page four. Now, I may have missed it, but I'm just sort of seeking what the black line is intended to represent on that plan.
Sir, I'm a planner rather than engineer.
No, but there's no reference to it that I could see in the actual text.
My understanding, looking at that, is that's the division between the Holocene estuary deposits and the Holocene river deposits. Did that sound like I knew what you're talking about?
Sounds sensible, yes. Exactly, okay, thank you.
Brendan's got an engineering perspective, would you agree with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, right. Shall I turn to the panel for questions?
If I just give context, so the report was done at the time of leading into the FDS hearings to try and provide context to the listed hazard there. There is an identified liquefaction hazard across that land, as there is across much of Napier. So the report was provided by, the investigation report by Anisha, was to give context to the nature of that risk versus every other development land in Hawke's Bay, Napier.
What inference should we make of, the report is only focused on Mr Burkitt's property, not the other properties involved. What do we make of that in terms of the conclusions from this report?
I think we see that it's sitting on that same Holocene estuary deposit. I think the basic line is, there's a risk there and the standard engineering is, we expect the risk, we find the risk, and this is how we mitigate that risk with our foundation design now. There was nothing that was jumping out. It was purely for information, it wasn't intended to be comprehensive because we weren't going to pay for comprehensive assessment across all of that land at that time. It was just simply as a marker to show, yep, no different to any other land.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the panel?
In terms of rezoning proposals, there's other issues that we need to have addressed. For example, traffic, noise, visual amenity. You'd normally see evidence on those. And I understand you're in a strange position because of the whole uncertainty about this proposed flood protection stock bank. Would there be an intention to deal with those issues by way of provisions then, given we don't have evidence before us on them?
Yeah, the RPS policy UD12 has an extensive range of matters for structure plans. And when I was looking at, going through those perhaps late last night, to me it was more about, well, the actual, the detail of that would be at the time of development almost because we know that, we know the area is adjacent to existing industrial and we know the character of the area down there. And it would be about ensuring that any industrial development was of a suitable quality. Perhaps higher quality than an earthworks contractor has done at the moment, but with suitable planting visual mitigation. Brendan's, Mr Burkitt's yard could be quite quickly concealed. If there was a flood protection bund, for example, that starts to build up visual buffering really quickly. So yeah, we would like to have further information, we would like to have all of that full set of details. But a lot of that, given the nature of the flexibility that we're seeking in allowing for large lot or small lot development. Our fear is that, you know, we make this available and someone comes along and grabs 10 hectares and it's almost all gone. But, you know, that's a reality on the cards. And a development like that would be of its own, you know, coming in with full comprehensive set of design and development mitigation measures. I know how it sounds, I'm trying to bump it down to resource consent level. But a lot of, because of the flexibility that we're trying to retain here and because it's industrial and, you know, it's not house lots and it's not trying to create a suburban environment. It is trying to create a contemporary industrial expansion to the older Awatoto character.
So basically, are you saying that issues such as traffic, noise, visual amenity and other things, they'd be addressed either at time of subdivision or resource consent application? Is that how you'd see it working?
I do, I do, I do, yeah.
Okay, just to follow our question, so in terms of traffic, because we haven't got evidence before us in terms of potential traffic issues or effects and things like that, is the idea of the structure plan that any development, industrial development of this land were to be accessed via that cul-de-sac road, not off McLeod Road?
That's correct. So the road, the central road shown there, we'd seek that as a vested road, provides access to the two rear lots from Awatoto Road, prevents them being reliant on McLeod Road. And then the three other lots along there, well, two of them would potentially have access off that road and Brendan and Mr Burkitt's one on the corner, we would still see potential for those road frontage ones to be accessed directly off Awatoto Road. I understand it's six plus six, so 12 metres worth of seal required for that type of road environment, for trucks turning in and cars underpassing or on the eastbound lane for trucks turning in and cars overpassing. That's hence the little blue dashed indicative road widening line. The road reserve width there is quite wide, but we would want to make sure that it wasn't trying to push onto the golf course land, that it was, any widening was done on this side of the road. There are a range of matters, if we'd have, yeah, there are a range of matters that can be done. I mean, we could have done a roundabout and direct offset from directly opposite, entry directly opposite Erickson Road, but there's various guidance, which, I think we're about 100 metres off Erickson Road with this entrance. That's, I'm confident meets the guidance that I've been advised.
Thank you. Questions?
You know, I think it's been answered. My question was sort of around giving those bund alignment options remain unsuited. And did you think there was a place for the triggers in the plan around the zoning? I think you've answered that in terms of your position still being that it's suitable for development with raised platform.
Yeah, so a catch in the provisions saying, you know, development, use or development, you know, shall not proceed prior to either implementation of a flood protection bund or land raising to provide that equivalent flood hazard resilience.
And I think I heard earlier there was a commitment to work on some of that wording in reply, together, is that correct?
I'd like to commit to that, yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes.
So just thinking through some more what you're suggesting, and in terms of provisions, would it be as simple as a consequential amendment to the GIZ zone provisions whereby the things that would normally be a permitted activity would just simply be discretionary activities?
Restricted discretionary maybe, yeah.
With, we'd need appropriate matters of discretion, so.
Yeah, or, yeah, discretionary would still work. I'm not scared of discretionary, it's industrial use of industrial zone land. Scared of discretionary, no, no, it's that.
But there are quite a wide range of issues that would need to be addressed.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's Commissioner's point that he was making in terms of, you know, everything from natural hazards through to servicing to traffic, et cetera, et cetera, so.
So that could be a relative, should we be minded to consider favourably the rezoning? A simple solution to the issues of the lack of detail at this stage would be a simple discretionary activity pathway, wouldn't it?
That would probably be an efficient and effective solution for it. Yeah, I'm in favour, I agree.
And all matters would be on the table before a subsequent decision-maker?
Yep.
Have to stack up on its merits or not? All right, I think it's very interesting.
Thank you, and no further questions? Thank you very much, Mr Burkitt, do you want to?
I think you've said it all, to be fair.
Okay.
Yeah, I just know how much everyone's, all our sort of colleagues at work, they struggle to get land to do what we do. So yeah, we've got three contractors in our yard as well with us, because I've got nowhere to go, so that's kind of.
Indication of how tight it is?
Yeah, yeah.
And also, these guys are having to pay $300 a square metre for unserviced bare land with a small building on it for their use. It's not a great situation for these, for our poor contractors.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr Burkitt, Mr Kay.
Thank you.
Right. All right.
And just one for the officers, are they able, is anyone able to illuminate us on what's happening with this flood protection bund? And who are the actual decision-makers and when might a decision be expected?
Yeah, I mean, so the information that has been provided by our engineers is essentially the same as what the submitters have. And that the update that was provided in the workshop and through the FDS process, there's not been any movement in that.
Who's the decision-makers? Who makes these decisions?
So there's a group of three, there's Napier City Council, the Regional Council and the industrial users group. And I believe that together they're working on it, but the Regional Council, I think, are the ultimate decision-makers.
The Regional Council is the lead agency, were they the ones who'd administer that ordering council for these floodworks?
Yep.
Yeah, so are they the primary decision-making body?
I believe so, yes.
Are you able to inquire from them when we might expect a decision on that?
Yes, of course, yeah.
Just say it's pertinent to our consideration of this submission, which we hope to reach a decision on in the next few weeks, not the next few months.
Yes, I can do that.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Burkitt.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, I think our next submitter is Maranoi Golf Club. Commissioner Van Voorthausen will recuse himself for being a member of the club.
I'm a member of the golf clubs, I'm going to sit down and bet.
Okay. We've saved a seat for you. I don't think he knows what's going on, so that's all right. Okay, welcome, welcome to the hearing. Again, we've had some pre-circulated evidence from Mr Kay on the golf club's rezoning request. Let me just get my ducks in the row. So shall we have open your supplementary information you provided or was circulated this morning?
Yeah, I think that might be helpful. Again, after listening to a few other submissions and some of the comments expressed where there were diagrams explaining things, I thought, hey, what I should do is some diagrams. And, yeah, they are quite helpful. Well, I found, having been out and better understood the division and what's going on, I hoped that a couple of pictures might be worth a couple of words. So, yeah, again, apologies for the timing on this, it was late afternoon yesterday, sorry. It's not exactly in good form, but it was needs must. Okay, so the Maranoi Golf Club submission covers two issues relating to firstly zoning and then the introduction of a golf-specific precinct to provide for the golf activities. Just running through the start, I've inherited the submission following the departure of Mr Phil Stickney from Development Now, so I didn't prepare the submission and I've not actually had a lot to do with golf or that golf course. So I'm a little bit of a junior.
You've got a handicap.
Well, yes. I believe golf involves either talent or patience and.
Ideally both.
Yeah, I'm missing there. So I've prepared the evidence on the basis of Mr Stickney's submission and my understanding of the land. And again, with those apologies, I prepared a supplementary note yesterday that hopefully provided a bit more context. With me, I have Ms Michelle Dodansky, and I may have practised her surname about 100 times this morning. Michelle's from Maranoi Golf Club. She is here in case she can answer questions regarding their operation and how they're seeing things working. Mr Dodansky can also speak to the value of the Awatoto Public Golf Course, both as a resource because it's a pay-and-play, no club fees required, and also to the overall Maranoi Golf Club, it's quite a helpful addition for income. Okay, so, sorry, I'm out of order now, I've thrown myself out of order, so.
Okay, well, maybe if you could talk to your supplementary, that was what I was saying this morning, is a good way of leading us through the submission.
Okay, so the first issue of the submission was the zoning. There are some anomalies there in the coverage of the open space zone as it was going to apply to the golf courses. And also, sorry, a couple of little spots were missed out, and then the Awatoto Golf Course had been excluded from the open space zone. So submission was made and there seems to be agreement in the 42A report, so there's probably not a lot to talk with there, it tidies it up. We agree that the open space zone is the most appropriate zone for the land. The second is around the introduction of a specific precinct. And while we don't want to add complication, for complication's sake, we do see value. to add complication for, for complication's sake, we do see value in differentiating the golf courses from the wider open space land resource, and so that's generally what we're talking about here. So the precinct is, is seeking to, you know, provide for their, their activities, but also redevelopment of the Awatoto Public Golf Course. So the, the two golf courses join one another and they're separated by a stop bank, east west stop bank that we talked about 10 minutes ago. So the stop bank's within or next to a historic designation, it's not quite sitting in the designation, and there's various work being done with council and, with Nap City Council, Hawke's Bay Regional Council and the golf, Moranoi Golf Course to work through resolution of that designation anomaly and continuation or rebuild of that stop bank. So on the southern side is the Awatoto Public Golf Course, that's land that's owned by Nap City Council but leased by the Moranoi Golf Course, Golf Club I should say. On the northern side is the much larger Moranoi Golf Course, so as a, well, benefits from a private members' club, it's an associated golf retail and administration facilities, it's, has all the bells and whistles, do you say, that are expected for a private golf, golf club? And it's rather nice when you go in there, better say, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, and conveniently, this is all just to the immediate north of our previous submission that we were talking about. The Awatoto Course was inundated during Cyclone Gabriel, so crossed the industrial land and then the Awatoto Golf Course was partly impounded by that east west stop bank before this, before the stop bank was in part overtopped, in part breached through a water flow scenario. Water went, water, water wasn't fully contained by that stop bank anyway, but the, the golf course, the Awatoto Golf Course prior to the Cyclone had, was supported by a clubroom building, that had been there for many decades, I understand, provided an opportunity for casual players to enjoy hospitality services in association with the golf course in a similar manner to the facilities enjoyed by the members of the private course. So it was a clubroom building, you could get a, a sandwich and a glass of lemonade, yeah, and licensed bar. I was saying I'd get the lemonade. So, yeah, it was full facilities there akin to a private club, but it was for, it was public. And Mr Dodansky will, will, would love to highlight that, you know, they are, they're a great resource as a public club, enabling people to, who are not members, who are not paid up members, to able to attend and experience, well, play golf and experience a clubhouse. I've snipped a couple of photos there, just so that on, sorry, I don't have page numbers, after paragraph 11 in that supplementary statement, just a little circled of this was the building and then a Google streetscape from 2019 of this was the building, there's nothing, nothing significant, but was quite a helpful offer for, for that public facility. So that building was inundated by that Cyclone Gabriel flooding, the building was damaged to an extent that it was then demolished and, and removed. Since that time, the Awatoto Golf Course has been reinstated, so there was obviously damage to the golf, to the.
Fairway?
Fairways, plural?
Yep.
Feel, fairways and drain the holes out, things like that. And they've been operating from a very, from a lightweight temporary building to, to get themselves up and running. That's obviously an interim arrangement and there is desire to return to facilities similar to what they previously, prior to Gabriel had. So this is where the section 42A has sought a master plan for what's going on and it's a fair request. So the intent for development is, is really limited, it is replacement of that clubhouse, albeit with an additional driving range, with a driving range, I should say. So we've got a concept plan and we've got the drawings for that provided in that set of documents last night. There's minor complications with various aspects of it that haven't been fully resolved, so they're not final plans, but they're advanced, advanced plans for that development. And the, the addition of a driving range, I puzzled myself thinking, well, you know, a driving range, and then I thought, you know, where else do you put a driving range? It's probably quite an appropriate additional provision there, and it just, it expands on their, their services, golfing related services. So we don't have a master plan developed for the golf course or the wider Moranoi Golf Club, as the development intent is, is limited to those set out concept plans of the, of the clubhouse and driving range. Our concern is, as introduced earlier, is that sitting within the open space zone, the Awatoto Golf Court, Golf Course facilities are a commercial activity, they're, they're there to provide for people, but they're also earning an income that goes to the wider Moranoi Golf Club. As a commercial activity, I think they, from quick assessment, open space zone rule, OSZ R8 would classify it, the retail and hospitality as discretionary activities, and the objectives and policy, policies for the open space zone are generic, well, generic, I don't want to use the term generic, they're, they're tailored to the wider open space land resource, and this commercial use is materially different, and so it sits at odds with those objectives and, development would sit at odds with those objectives and policies. And I fear that we would have difficulty through a resource consent pathway for that development. Quite reasonable development, it's, you know, it hasn't, it's not grand massive plans, but it would still exceed the allowances and trigger discretionary and be assessed against those objectives and policies which are, don't cater to, to commercial activity. So that's, that's led to the, the desire to introduce a golf course specific precinct to, to apply to the land and that would enable this development. The, the precinct rules have been tailored, as I say, to provide for that concept plan, they're stating ancillary golf retail up to 200, ancillary golf hospitality up to 200, and a driving range with up to 50 square metres of building floor space. It's still, you know, fairly modest scale in context of the overall area. That's the limit of it. I mean, it's a little bit of a, I feel the expectation on a master plan was, was a grand redevelopment and probably with unlimited resources, Mr Dodansky would be off doing that, but they've got a wonderful Moranoi Golf Course and they've got a very functional Awatoto Golf Course that just needs these facilities added. I think I've talked myself out, if anyone wants to interject with a question or a comment, we can talk through the plans if, if you want at all. The plans are fairly straightforward. Here is a single storey building, long and low, functional for, for the, the club and the course needs, and leading on to a, a driving range, so driving range fairly integral to the, to the main building, so sitting there having your sandwich and lemonade, and next you are the people in the driving range booths.
Can I just, it's a question of clarification, so the, the main object of the precinct that you proposed, or was proposed in the submission anyway, was to enable the driving range to occur without consent process, without a resource consent.
The clubrooms and that, sorry, yeah, their clubroom, their, their commercial hospitality, retail and driving range.
Oh, so there's a retail shop as well?
Golfing, golfing shop, yeah. All golf related, all as a, as a, as a replacement with improvement from those that were lost to Cyclone Gabriel.
Have you had, have you had clarification from the council that consent would be needed under the open space zoning for those activities?
No.
All right, because I'm just, the definition of recreational activities doesn't, doesn't imply that they have to be free or, you know, not at cost and things, no charge, and normally even golf courses normally would have come at a cost to users, so I'm just wondering where, where the need, I was going to say where the drive for this precinct is, is really based and coming from? Have you had a chance to sort of look at that? I know you've taken over Mr Stickney's role, but.
Yeah, thanks, I have inherited. No, I, I, I looked at it and my, my instinct was, well, it's commercial. If there's a, if there's a different interpretation that we could get on paper and agreed and that wasn't subject to further interpretation, we'd be happy.
A precinct, you would have heard the discussion earlier today about keeping things simple.
Yes.
And not putting layer over layer over layer on the district planning maps and things.
Yeah.
In terms of that, so if there's another way of achieving that, if, if that's an appropriate outcome to permit it, then that's what we would be looking for rather than.
Yeah.
Creation of another precinct just for a particular activity?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. If there's an easier way, and I did note, we didn't want to complicate for complicate's sake with a precinct because of that earlier discussion, if there's an easier way, but we also do want that certainty. You know, we, in interpretation today, we would, this week, this month, we, we really would want to ensure it didn't shift with different staff or, or passage of time when the development comes forward. But no, I, yeah, if there was, if there was a, if there was a, a way of doing it without, without a precinct, we'd be happy. All we're after is that development there to be enabled.
Because when I read the section 42A report, it's clear that there's support or agreement to rezone to open space zone, there's a logic about that clearly, but the, the reporting officer just unclear what the precinct was meant to achieve or anything there. So I think today has been helpful for her in terms of understanding what is trying to be achieved and whether it's appropriate outcome, and if it is an appropriate outcome, how best to give effect to it.
Yeah, my apologies there because I was a little bit, it was an unknown to me as well, I assumed the precinct was, when I read the submission initially when I was taking it over from, after Mr Stickney's departure, I was the same of, oh, okay, something grand going on, and then when it condenses down to, oh, it's quite a logical replacement development of a reasonable scale, it has a driving range which appears as a big structure, but it's, you know, where, where else do you put a driving range? Put it on a golf course? And, yeah, they've done some neat things with the driving range to make it smaller than a normal driving range also, and yeah, it is, it condenses down to that and you're going, oh gosh, okay, but, you know, if the precinct is, is, if the precinct's the only viable way, then we'll push on for a precinct if there's an alternative, or if we got something, if we were confirmed that commercial activities wouldn't trigger that discretionary activity, OSZ eight rule, we'd be on board.
I'm just turning my mind to how best to proceed with this now, there's some clarity about what the purpose of the precinct was and, and, you know, whether it should be given effect to it. Just before I do that, any questions from the panel?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. I mean, I had a similar set of questions, which I think you've, together you've delved into appropriately, you know, what alternative schemes or policy mechanisms could provide the same certainty, so I think we're getting down to the nub of the issue. I did have some questions around, you know, given that the stop bank alignment's still under discussion, how could those different scenarios potentially affect the need for the precinct or the layout of the footprints? But I think that's probably been superseded by the discussion that's being had now. Yeah, so sort of over to you to give some guidance, Mr Chair, but I do think there is an ability for the, for the officer and the submitter to get together on some wording that does provide, you know, whether that's in the discretionary, inside the discretionary rule, or whether that sits inside some policy or objective clarification for different scenarios, but there's an ability there to, I think, make an agreement between the two. I think the general understanding is, is, is the same.
Can I, can I just turn to the officers about this, how best to proceed with this? Given what you've heard this morning and read, do you think, dare I say, another joint witness statement would be appropriate way to proceed or not?
Yes, potentially. I would just like the opportunity to, with the information now and the plans, which have been very helpful, just go through the open space zone provisions carefully to see how that activity is provided for or not.
Or not.
And then have a follow up discussion.
Yeah, I did my own quick scan, but I didn't get any conclusions on that point.
Just need the detail working through, I think.
Okay.
For you, Mr Chair, I do have sort of, I guess, a question around how many other open space zonings might fall within a similar situation when they have their sort of long term leases to conduct commercial activities on? So I guess how unique the activity as a, as a general is, or whether or not there may be a specific rule that might cover, be appropriate to cover commercial activities on, in scenarios like that, if it was reasonably unique, but that's something I guess you can consider as you work through the detail of the rule. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, just again, clarification or interest question, the bund that separates the two golf courses, what is it for? I mean, it seems it stops and starts, but there's no, what's the out purpose of that stop bank?
That stop bank is a historic, old, old Hawke's Bay Regional Council, or probably Hawke's Bay Catchment Board stop bank. So it's, it was a historic flood defence structure that fell into disrepair, it's.
It's quite large at one end, the inland side is quite high.
Yeah.
I see, yeah.
Be almost perfect, it's a high secondary flood protection bund, sorry. Yeah, so it's been there, it probably, well, it predates Mr Dodansky and my knowledge of the area.
What, what happened during Cyclone Gabriel? What, what affected that stop bank have?
Stop being compounded water for some time.
Which, which side?
Oh, sorry, on the, on the southern side, so water that came from the, the river, from the river mouth, combined river mouth flowed north.
Yeah, okay.
Went, went through Awatoto, through council's wastewater treatment plant, and was stopped by the stop bank for a certain time.
Yeah, at one point it, it did over top it because it had been made redundant, it had been used as a crossover, so some water did come over, but it literally held the water over Awatoto, which meant that the Regional Council then had to, not allowed to say blow it, they had to disestablish a portion of it to allow the water to flow through, and hence why it flowed then through Moranoi Golf Course and into Tiawa.
Right.
But that was an intentional removal of that portion of the stop bank.
Right.
In saying that, we are working really, really closely with Hawke's Bay Regional Council in respect of that stop bank, but also the Awatoto Industry Action Group in respect of the other stop bank, which I've named Awatoto and Moranoi for the one that runs between our courses, which is why this has become more of a priority, the, the driving range, because the impact of the reinstatement or introduction of those stop banks, because they are crossing both of our courses.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, thank you for that, that's helpful. I don't have any further questions, do, any further response from the officers? No one?
Not at this stage, no.
Okay, cool.
Again, my apologies for the delays on getting that information through, it was, it was so, such a change, seeing the scale that's intended, yeah, again, that's on me.
Okay, I think, I think if there was some. Okay, I think, I think if there was some agreement that, that provision for the proposal at Maranui, in Awatoto, I should say, were, should be given effect to, how to give best effect to that? Rather than, you know, looking at options rather than a precinct would be helpful. Or if it's not appropriate even, you know, not foreclosing that decision, maybe a consent process is required for an activity like that proposed. So keeping that door open.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr Kay, Mr Dunskey.
Well done.
Thank you.
And again, a few people have said it, but the administrative support, Gracie and Nicola have done massive jobs chasing us and it's really appreciated. It's made our relationship with the panel and the work much easier. So we are very grateful.
They're an excellent team, thank you. Do we have, we do. Our final submitter before lunch and Commissioner Van Voortenhausen can rejoin us if he wants, is Ms McPherson for the Fuel Companies. Welcome again.
Good morning.
Hey.
Or just after midday, yeah?
Yeah, good afternoon now.
Good afternoon.
So as normal, we have read your pre-circulated evidence. And as for your information to the panel, went to Battery Road yesterday afternoon, after the hearing finished, to look at the, the question around the, well, you know, the MUZ and the question of rezoning that site to General Industrial and the wider sort of effects management of activity on that land.
Sure.
No doubt there's some questions for you on that matter. But basically over to you to talk to your submission.
Sure, okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. And I'm aware you've also heard from the reporting planner and neighbouring submitters already. So I'll only touch very briefly on sort of that background and context. Obviously you're aware that there was proposal in the proposed plan to rezone land around those bulk fuel storage terminals. It's currently a mixed use zoning with the terminals to have an industrial zone and the parcel of land at eighty-five A Battery Road to have a mixed use zone. The Fuel Companies sought rezoning of all of that land to industrial zone to enable consistent management of activities and avoid the complications that arise when you've got a split zoning across a single land use activity. And, and also primarily to ensure a move away from residential activity being enabled in that location and to avoid a conflict with the, the risk management overlays which apply a non-compliant activity status to residential in, in order to manage the risk and reverse sensitivity issues versus the permitted activity status that's applied to residential under mixed use zoning. The officer report was to rezone all of that land to General Industrial and I support that position. And also you'll be aware that there's been a suggestion of including an additional precinct in relation to this parcel of land in order to manage that land use compatibility issue that's quite unique in this location and also quite historic. Both the terminals and residential activities in this area have been in place and operating together for quite some time. My understanding also on the basis of what submitters have said is that it's not the fuel company activities that has been of particular concern. In my experience with the fuel companies certainly has been that they have undertaken a number of management measures on their sites to ensure that they're compliant with relevant standards around managing noise, lighting and other adverse nuisance effects to minimise disruption to neighbours. In my evidence, I took the position that I could support the option of applying a precinct as a mechanism for managing that land use compatibility issues, subject to understanding how that would work in practice. Given the initial proposal from the council to do that, didn't have any of that detail included. In, in the interim, in my evidence, I set out that I consider the district-wide provisions of managed effects such as noise, lighting and trip generation to generally provide an appropriate means of managing nuisance effects. And noted in particular that activities generating noise effects in the industrial zones are required to meet the standards of the zone at the receiving site, which in this case obviously is the noise standards applying to the residential zone. And that, that's a point that I, I understand that the residential submitters hadn't entirely appreciated in terms of how those night provisions would work in the plan. And the reporting officer has very helpfully provided additional information and a table that sets out a comparison of the provisions in the operative plan versus those in the proposed plan and how that would apply in this location. So since the evidence, I've had the benefit of direct discussions with the reporting officer in Nevis last Friday, thirteenth of June, and reviewed that additional information prepared by Ms Morgan, which I found to be extremely helpful in, in providing that comparative analysis between both the, the sort of the nuisance provisions of noise, lighting, traffic effects and designing provisions and that comparison between the mixed use zoning that was included in the notified version of the plan and the proposed industrial zone provisions that the fuel companies are supporting. At this point, whilst I certainly acknowledge the concerns raised by the neighbours and I found it a very helpful discussion to really appreciate what's, what's been going on at those sites. My, my primary role in relation to these sites has been looking at management of the fuel companies' activities rather than how the activities of these parts of the site that are subleased out to third parties are managed and operated. So it was, it was very informative in that respect. However, having gone through the provisions again in more detail, I do remain of the opinion that the, the provisions in the plan around noise, lighting and traffic should be effective in effectively managing those nuisance effects. I certainly came away with the impression that there's likely been an absence of enforcement of the noise provisions. My experience from, from working on other sites is that things like tracking movements, the movement of shipping containers, logging trucks, vehicle wash downs, the sorts of activities that have been of particular concern to the neighbours, would find it extremely difficult to comply with the noise thresholds, particularly the nighttime noise thresholds. And in this case, the proposed plan is looking to introduce a five decibel reduction both during the daytime and nighttime hours. I think there will be a number of ways of mitigating noise generated by different industrial activities through the development of, of comprehensive acoustic management plans around the operation of sites. In terms of the discussions around controlling specific activities that we, we had on Friday, there was, there were three roles that, that we looked at in particular. And that was the, the general rule one, which currently permits any industrial activity or building within industrial zones. There had been a discussion that for the Ahurri sites, the permitted industrial activity category be limited to fuel storage and ancillary activities with all other industrial activities defaulting to non-compliant. In my opinion, that, that certainly takes things a step too far and would really undermine the industrial zoning of that land in the first place. And the, draw your attention to the introduction for the general industrial zone, which I think really captures the issue that there's limited space available in Nevia and the potential loss of industrials-owned land to non-industrial zone uses needs to be avoided unless there is an important functional need for the activities to be located in the area. Non-industrial use of the zone is restricted to ensure suitable areas of land remain available for industrial land uses, which typically have little ability to establish in non-industrial zones. This is also important for reverse sensitivity reasons. So in my opinion, a non-compliant activity status that applied to all industrial activities other than the fuel storage activities would be extremely inconsistent with, with that intent and approach to industrials-owned land, which is a scarce supply in the Nevia district. And I heard that from the submitter before the last one who was presenting this morning as well. The site is, is particularly strategically located by proximity to this, to the port and close to those key transport routes between the port and the remainder of the region. So I would not, wouldn't support a restriction of that nature on all industrial activities other than fuel storage. The other two roles we, that we looked at in particular were rule five, which relates to the storage of tyres and applies a permitted activity status. And having gone back and read through the specific controls that apply to being able to obtain that permitted activity status, I, I am of the opinion that they, they really do limit the scale and intent, intensity and nature of any storage of tyres on a site to something that is very ancillary, which is one of the requirements to be a permitted activity status, that it's ancillary to a prior activity. The area of, area used for tyre storage is limited to less than ten square meters, height of maximum one point five metres and to be located more than ten metres from the front boundary. So to me, it's something that might be more in the realms of spare, you know, spare tyres being stored for tracking activity than perhaps what I understand submitters might have been more concerned about as, as, as the likes of a sort of a storage disposal depot. We'd have a scenario of mountains of tyres being built up over a period of time. And I agree that wouldn't be an appropriate activity in this location, but that is something that would certainly be going through a consenting process because it would fall outside of those very strict and limited permitted activity criteria. The third rule that we looked at in particular was rule six, which relates to the storage of shipping containers. Again, there's, there's certainly checks and balances in the ability to obtain a permitted activity status out of that, in that rule. In particular around the hours of operation, which limited the daytime hours between eight and ten P M. I do see a bit of an inconsistency in the boundary setback provisions there where there's a minimum two metre requirement compared to the standards in the, in, in the same chapter where, which set a six metre yard setback for activities on industrials-owned land adjacent to residential. So it's unclear to me which of those thresholds would prevail in that case, the two metre or the six metre? And likely, you know, I would expect the six metre would certainly be more appropriate with that residential interface. There's, there's again a specific clause that references noise, but also the underlying, the underlying noise provisions from the zone would prevail and be required to be complied with. One of the other issues that was raised was the issue of height. And it was noted that the height limit for this zone in the Ahurri area is twenty-four metres. And I agree there potentially is a discussion to be had around whether storage of shipping containers for twenty-four metres in this particular location would be appropriate. But in saying that, I'm also aware that one mechanism for management of, of noise effects as part of shipping container storage is the creation of a noise barrier with the containers between the more active parts of the site and adjoining neighbours. So it's, it's something that I think is, is probably worth looking at in more detail. But I do think that the suggestion of a restriction to a single level, just one, one container in height, is perhaps more restrictive than it, it needs to be in the context of, of then the broader type restrictions that apply in the zone. So I think on, on, on balance, where I've got to in, in considering the suggestion of the precinct, and this also particularly takes into consideration that these provisions would also apply to the fuel companies' activities, when they're not necessarily intended to be directed that way. But there had also been some suggestions raised around things like a restriction, further restrictions on use of heavy vehicles on these sites. And to me, that again becomes something that's quite unworkable for a site that does have an industrial zoning and would undermine its role and purpose in providing for industrial activities. So I, I'm tending towards a position where I believe that the industrial zone provisions do generally provide a high level of protection in this zone, in this location. I note that some of the, the, the rules in the, in the chapter currently do provide additional restrictions on a zone-specific and a location-specific basis. And height's one example of that, where there's no height limit for the industrial zone in general, but for the Ahurri area, there is a height limit of twenty-four metres. So I would, I would suggest that for any other further targeted restrictions, such as a restriction on height of shipping containers in, in this particular location, the more straightforward way of doing it might be to include an additional clause in the rule that was specific to storage in the Ahurri industrial zone rather than necessarily going down the track of a whole new precinct applying to this industrial zone. So those are probably the key points that I wanted to bring to your attention. So I'd be really happy to answer any questions or discuss the issues further.
Okay, thank you, Ms McPherson. Can I just seek some clarification too? The, the, your client, the fuel companies, how much of the, the area that's, would be captured by that precinct actually owned by your clients, to the fuel company, and how, how many are owned by other entities, organisations?
Sure. So the, the fuel company clients, the, across this whole zone, there is VP terminal and there's a Z terminal. And for both parties, they don't own the underlying land, they lease it from other, from the property owner with long-term leases in place of sort of forty to fifty year duration. The site at eighty-five A Battery Road, that's the, the particular topic of discussion. that's the particular topic of discussion, is part of the area leased by Z Energy, their terminal activities. However, they then sublease off this section of the site. It's split up into three leases, three sublease areas. And so they don't own the land. They have fairly standard lease agreements in place, typically with those subtenants that obligate them to comply with relevant legislative requirements, including obtaining resource consents and complying with district or regional plan standards as necessary. So they don't take, as with most landlords, they don't necessarily take an active role in managing how those activities are undertaken on a day-to-day basis. But it was certainly, the meeting on Friday was attended by Z Energy representative, who I'm aware certainly found it very interesting to understand how some of those activities have been operating.
Okay, thank you. And for the properties on Coronation and Tanga Rua roads, again, the fuel companies have no interest in those properties that are caught up within the precinct idea?
So the ones that are currently sort of
They're in buildings.
House type buildings facing Coronation. No, those are owned by a third party and neither of your companies have no interest in those. And do they? And the ones on the south side of Tanga Rua Street?
I think just changing text slightly and maybe to kick off questions as well. From our site visit yesterday and from the evidence we had from submitters as well yesterday, from local residents, I think a lot of the issues, I mean, one concern I expressed was, you know, it may be, I don't know, container stacking one time and a year later it might be storage of tyres. But then again, it could be a whole range of different activities. And it seems to be a lot of the key issues on effects are related to the use of heavy vehicles, trucks and articulated lorries and things, forklifts and things like that. Coming on either unsealed area or area where there's dust and things, debris that fly around as well. So just looking through those rules that you helpfully led us through as well for the GIZ, I find it hard to see that those sorts of effects would be readily captured by those controls. Because it could be something else that's unexpected, wants to use the land. You know, we had examples of storing up wood for firewood, for instance, and things like that on Sundays. So I don't know if you have any view. That's a sort of landing a heavy question on you right now. Have you any sort of view around how those sorts of effects could be managed? Because as you said, you took us through storage of tyres, for instance, and containers. But there's a wide range of sort of open yard kind of activities that could occur on those sites.
Sure. And I believe there are some provisions, some standards in the proposed plan that do control open yard type activities. I would anticipate that there will be, there's certainly the standard RMA controls in place around objectional nuisance extending beyond the boundaries in terms of things like dust generation. And it does sound to me like perhaps best practice hasn't necessarily been followed in all cases, where dust has been going beyond the boundaries of the site. I would think that there will also start to be some provisions coming through in the regional plan around management of stormwater that will start to bite and in terms of the use of heavy vehicles. And, sorry, I haven't looked at these provisions recently, but I'm aware these are coming through as part of the tank plan changes at the regional level that are looking to introduce roles around the pack-up stormwater, include controls on stormwater runoff where heavy vehicles are in use. And I think that will start to limit the ability to undertake these sorts of activities on paved surfaces, certainly in terms of things like runoff into stormwater networks and a need to track what's coming off the site before it gets into the stormwater network. So I'm just trying to find this outdoor storage rule I'm sure I have seen in here, standard four.
Yeah, I was just looking at standard four.
Yeah.
Rules two. Rules two should have prevented the dust. There's no enforcement issue.
I think you've raised that. Like Clause two, as Commissioner Van Voltaals has pointed out, should cover a number of the issues we heard yesterday.
Yeah.
In terms of enforcement.
Yeah, I think they should. I think that if there is, I think officials are raised and there's a need to point to a permitted standard in the plan as a means of ensuring that activities are undertaken in an appropriate manner, then this rule would certainly assist in that space. And then Clause two, which talks about dust. Clause three, essentially stop piles or outdoor areas need to be kept tidy, attract vermin. More controls on separation from boundaries, which again introduces perhaps, again, a slight confusion between what the boundary setbacks would be expected to be, with a one-metre suggestion here versus six-metres for buildings at least under the general yard setback requirements in standard one.
Look at six and seven.
I think, yeah, I think Clause six could be quite difficult to demonstrate compliance with, a requirement for all outdoor storage areas to be screened from public view, particularly in this location where the hill raising up from behind the site means that those sites are very visible. And storage material extender contaminated lead change. Well, yeah, I would certainly hope that's controlled through the district plan.
Right. Because it seemed to us that a lot of the issues relate to the fact that these are outdoor areas used for various, a whole range of different activities over the years. And maybe that's where the, I won't say solution, but maybe that's where the sort of approach should be is the standard around the outdoor use of the site. And I mean, there's certain issues like the height of container stacking, for instance, and things like that. But I think the overall sort of issues that we've had in front of us just relate to that sort of outdoor activity, industrial activity, and their effects.
And I think it probably, I acknowledge it's quite a difficult one to address through standards in a plan because there's a very broad spectrum of intensity of vehicle use that comes along with different industrial activity types. I do think that the example in front of us, where the vehicles used by the fuel companies, which are modern tankers, they're quiet, they're well insulated, and feedback from residents has been that they aren't particularly disruptive compared to the nature of vehicles used. Just I said it with logging activities, the forklifts is a really good example of the spectrum that we're talking about. That blanket control on the use of heavy vehicles at an industrial site isn't necessarily going to be appropriate. And I don't think, I couldn't support that sort of approach that's been going to place additional obligations on the likes of the activities undertaken at the fuel terminals when that hasn't, it's been confirmed that that hasn't been a particular concern.
It's accepted, yeah.
There, I think there's certainly a number of ways of managing vehicle use at industrial sites that can go at least some way to managing these sorts of issues in terms of just things like driver education, removal of reversing beeps on trucks, potentially having paved areas rather than gravelled. The times of operation, the length of idling times, the times of day, certain activities or entry or exit to the site is undertaken. So there's a really broad spectrum and it needs to be catered to the specific activity that's being undertaken at the time. What's fit for purpose for a trucking depot might not be the same thing that applies to another industrial activity type. And so, yes, I certainly acknowledge it gets into a bit of a gray area as to where to set a threshold. I don't think the blanket control is the way to go. I do think what's in place in these provisions does provide a lot of, you know, a lot of guidance around what's expected and a mechanism to require action to be taken on the part of an operator if they're not achieving the standards that are set out and the likes of the standard four for storage of outdoor materials, the acoustic provisions and the noise section of the plan, the lighting provisions and the new heavy vehicle generation provisions that have been introduced in relation to the operative plan. So I do think there are a number of mechanisms in there.
Okay, thank you. I may just open up to the panel for further questions, if you don't mind.
No further questions from me. That's been a useful discussion. But just for the officers, if you could confirm that number seven Coronation Street, number five, seven A, seven B and seven Tanga Rua Street are not owned by the fuel companies? I'm asking you to do that because I imagine it's on a Napier City website. You can easily tell us the answer to that. But otherwise, no further questions. Thank you.
Do you want any questions? Right, now that's been helpful, Mrs McPherson. So thank you for your input into the hearing. Much appreciated. And we understand sort of the limits to your scope in terms of some of the issues we're facing with this particular interface, this industrial residential interface. So thank you for that. Okay. No, thank you very much. We'll adjourn the hearing for lunch and we will resume to hear our final submitted at 1.30, which is in Maud Hills. So thank you very much, everyone. submit at one thirty, uh which is in Maud Hills. So thank you very much, everyone.
Hearing Stream Six is reconvened after the lunch break and we have one more submitter to be heard. And that is Emerald Hills and Mr. Cameron Jury is sitting before us, welcome.
Thank you.
We have read your pre-circulated evidence, thank you very much. So I imagine it's not a huge complicated matter.
No.
So over to you, Mr. Jury.
Thank you. So just to confirm my understanding that I'm presenting evidence for Hearing Stream Five at the moment as well.
Is it?
Yeah. So I figured I'd just sort of walk through my Hearing Stream Five evidence first.
Yep.
Take any questions and move on to Hearing Stream Six.
Okay.
That's okay. But as you note, there's nothing overly complicated here. I'm happy to walk through and read through some of the key points or alternatively I'm also happy to take any specific questions that you may have. In your hands really.
Well, just take us through your evidence very briefly if you can.
Yep.
And probably ask questions at the end of each one.
Yep. Maybe. Okay, that's absolutely fine. Well, look, Hearing Stream Five evidence, I'll start on page three. So policy dev three P nine. That policy there is all about enabling the use of the eastern hill face of the development of a walkway and cycleway. Basically, my view here is that there's already specific direction around enhancing and developing Napias pathway network through the structure plan. It's already provided for in that and in the design outcomes, now assessment criteria in the plan. My view is that looking to enable use of the eastern hill face itself would actually be introducing additional requirements to that determined through the structure plan process. I don't believe the policy is necessary to give effect or sorry, to give regard or align with objective PA O two, which is all about connectivity. And I also question whether public access along the hill face is actually the right outcome as well when we've got a lot of pathways within the development. And then the final comment there is that I feel as though this whole matter has actually already been addressed through the joint statement of mine with Ms. Longley as well during Hearing Stream Two. Moving on to the next point, assessment criteria dev three AC one B. Again, this matter has come up in Hearing Stream Two as well, I think, and that's all about including reference to objectives and policies within an assessment criteria. It's previously been recommended by officers that that is to be removed. So I remain of the view that AC one B should be deleted. Moving through to assessment criteria AC one G two H. Now, this is all focused around stormwater. I had originally, I think, suggested that the whole thing could be deleted, but I do recognise the officer's point to say that the regional council discharge permit does actually only apply to a certain area of the development area. So on page five under paragraph nineteen, I've offered up a few amendments to tidy up a few references. So at paragraph nineteen, nineteen point one there, remove reference to appendix seven E, given that it relates to water supply, not stormwater. Nineteen point two, I've got down here, amend G two to provide for attenuation regardless of the nature of the servicing solution. So that means whether the proposal involves onsite solutions in the case of rural residential development, which the discharge permit doesn't apply to, or a municipal scale solution in the case of the residential scale subdivision. The idea there is to essentially achieve attenuation across the development site regardless of where the regional council discharge permit applies because that is the key matter in managing stormwater discharge from the development area. So those suggested amendments are outlined in G on page five over to page six. Assessment criteria AC one I. This was submitted, we submitted that be amended to give greater direction, that stormwater infrastructure is vested in council. Again, that was similar to assessment criteria pertaining to water supply and wastewater during Hearing Stream Four. I've outlined the relief sought on paragraph twenty-three in that regard. And then in paragraph twenty-four, just proposed the same relief, which I understood was generally accepted by the officer during that hearing as well. So I felt that resolved that and provided some consistency. Assessment criteria AC one N to Q on page seven of my evidence. This one was all about recognising that those assessment criteria don't apply to the residential precinct. The officer made the statement that there was insufficient evidence to persuade them of that view. So what I've done here in paragraph twenty-seven was just pulled out those assessment criteria and just looked to highlight where they could be considered to apply to the residential precinct. And then over on page nine, I've made some observations and basically determined through just looking at that as a tool to determine if they do, that there's very, very limited of any real connection to the residential precinct. So I'm of the view that they do not apply and that that could be clarified in the plan. Assessment criteria AC one O three. This one relates to the softening, as I have previously put it, rather than screening. And as we're well aware, that was considered as part of Hearing Stream Four. I provided further evidence to respond to your requests and rely on that previous evidence and that statement to address that assessment criteria in this context. And then moving to standard prec seven, standard one. I've just recognised there that if the relief sought in Hearing Stream Two to reduce the minimum lot size to two and a half thousand square metres, then some sort of amendments to standard one would be required. But again, I rely on the evidence in Hearing Stream Two to support the reduction in that minimum lot size. So it's really just a consequential amendment if that relief is awarded. So yes. Hopefully that high level summary assists.
Okay, well done in summarising that pretty briefly.
Hopefully I haven't jumped over it too quickly.
No. Any questions from the panel? There is? No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Right, so the next one, Hearing Stream Six in regard to rezoning is probably even more pointy. So starting at paragraph six, basically the idea here, and maybe if you refer to figure one on page two is probably the best way of looking at it, is that we have the indicative urban development line. Sorry, we have the, get my rights terminology sorted. It's the residential precinct and how that doesn't align with the boundaries of the two lots. Paragraph nine, I sort of make a few observations in terms of the challenges with this. Basically, it just brings a whole lot more assessment into the picture when we're actually trying to undertake subdivision activities. Basically, we're going to have lot, individual lot boundaries that are obviously going to extend through that area to connect with the property boundary. It seems unclear to me as to, well, the reason why it's aligned that way is because of the subdivision that occurred after the plan change was approved. I can't say why the property boundaries weren't aligned with it. And I make the comment through there in my evidence that yes, there could be a boundary adjustment to try to correct it. But it would seem simpler if, given the minor change that would be required for the residential precinct itself to be amended through this process just to align with those existing property boundaries. And I've tried to sort of, I guess, also test that view in terms of, you know, would there be any unanticipated effects as a result? And I've sort of come to the conclusion that given the narrow nature of the strip of land, that there's really no ability to undertake any lifestyle activities on the land, that it's really anticipated to be a residential use. So I saw no real issues to try to correct that situation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No, crystal clear.
Yeah, pretty clear. So thank you very much for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, Mr. Jury was our last submitter for Hearing Stream Six, acknowledging that it's not totally over because we have Hearing Stream Six A on the fifteenth of August, together with the Riverbend rezoning request at that time as well. So that's a couple of months away now, isn't it? It'll be here before we know. So on that point, we'll finish the hearing and thank everybody for the efforts and flexibility involved. So thank you very much.